Just starting the live broadcast now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so that's working. Members of the public and council will be arriving. I'll wait on, there's a lot joining now.
Oh yeah, sorry, late.
Okay. There's a lot of people all coming on stream at the same time now.
There's maybe in the waiting room now.
Okay, right, thank you. Right, good evening everyone, because of the Covid restrictions, not, well, it's because of what happened with the government said that we have to meet in full in person. We've changed the name of our particular committee to a working party. Now it's called Planning Working Party and we have to meet in full council in person to all this be ratified. Everything is ratified after this of all our decisions. Okay. Right, item one. It's welcome to note that this working party has no delegated authority and may only make recommendations to full council, which I've just stated. Urgent actions may be taken under delegated authority given to the clerk and myself. Okay. Right, item two, apologies for absence, have we got any apologies?
We have apologies from, apologies from Vicky Phillips, the clerk.
I think everyone has. Every council. Okay. Item three, declarations of pecuniary interest and request for dispensation. Anyone? Brown?
Yeah, let's be item five. I know Brian Thompson very well, he sits on various committees etcetera that are participating. So I'm declaring non pecuniary interest and I won't take part in the discussion on that one. Thank you.
Item five is matters arising on.
No, I said let's be item five.
Oh, right, okay, okay. Right, thank you. Minutes for the previous meeting?
Chair, we have a couple of other councillors wishing to make a declaration.
Sorry, councillor Greenie?
Yeah, same item as Tony for the same reasons.
Okay, councillor John Burns?
Yeah, I'm not on the committee but for exactly the same reasons.
Okay, is there anyone else? No? Okay, right, minutes for the previous meeting. May I have a proposal in the second that these are our true record? Proposed by councillor Luke Greenie, can I have a second? Councillor Liz Smith? All those in favour please show. Okay, thank you, everyone. Right, the minutes of the last meeting, which was on the 27th of April. Page 197. Anyone? No, page 198. You'll have to forgive me because I've got to scroll through to see if anyone. Page 199. No? Page 200. No? Page 201. Page 202, is there? No. Right, item. Item six, as we just done the matters arising. This is Mr Chris Gatlin, hold on. Yeah, Gatlin from Redrow Homes.
No, no.
No, oh, hold on.
Yes, from Redrow, sorry. So can I just interrupt, Chair, sorry. If you can't see everybody on the right hand side when you've got the full screen on, you can drag all the pictures wider. So you do everyone just for information.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Right. Also there's Harriet Wood, sorry, Harriet Wooler, Redrow's planning consultant.
Good evening.
Right, good evening. Right, Chris, can we hear what you've got to present or?
Sure, good evening, good evening councillors. Chris Gatlin from Redrow Homes, I've been asked to come on this evening just to give you a bit of a programme update really in terms of the progress we're making at the Great Wilsie Park site in Haverhill, which you'll all be, I'm sure, very familiar with. We presented, I think, a number of times to the committee over the last couple of years as we've moved through the planning process with regards applications for site infrastructure and then for the first tranche of housing, which from a planning perspective, we've now secured the two major approvals for the first, essentially the delivery of the first, roughly the first half of what Redrow are going to be delivering on the land that we've acquired at Great Wilsie Park. So just as a recap, the Redrow have acquired what we're sort of generically referring to as the Phase One development plots, which will enable us to deliver just shy of the first 900 units at the site. And we submitted applications a couple of years ago, one to to deal with the strategic infrastructure for those 900 plots, which is essentially roads and strategic drainage and utilities. And then we secured what's called a reserve matters approval, essentially reserved detailed matters for the first 499 of the 900 units that we're going to be building. So in terms of a programme update, we're building and developing homes from both the northern and southern ends of the first phase. The northern end of the site is at a more advanced stage than the southern end at the moment. We sent out a newsletter update to residents, we've actually done two of them, we did one last summer to come inside with the setup of works at the Haverhill Road end of the site. And then we've just done another one, which hopefully many of you have seen and we certainly have circulated it within the local community into a large resident base, which is for essentially giving some, giving some some information on what's going on at the southern Chelston Way end of the site over the coming weeks. So hopefully you've read and digested those. If you haven't, they're on our website or we can circulate the copies after the meeting. What this essentially has said is that we started at the Haverhill Road end of the site in terms of setup and enabling works back end of last summer, I believe it was. We started the road infrastructure in October and we started working on the first housing plots. It was actually at the end of February, early March of this year. We're breaking the site down into phases of construction. The first phase at the northern end, we're building 79 homes, 66 of which are on, in one consolidated area called Housing Parcel A1. And then another 13 are on the other side of the spine road. So we're sort of forming the street scene of the first spine road as you come off the roundabout. As it stands, we've got, we've got the spine road from what will be essentially the Haverhill Road junction, although the roundabout hasn't been completed obviously yet. We've got that first section of internal spine road built down to essentially a sacrificial wearing course and that takes us down into the site where we've started to form the drainage basins and we started to bring the first units out of the ground. So the, you will have seen that there's been deliveries going on at that end of the site, it's been very active, there's a lot of activity going on. We are, we're in the process now of the first lift of homes at that end of the site. You'll start to see just in the sort of short distance, you can see some scaffolding, I believe now, where we're lifting the first few plots out above ground floor. But closer to the Haverhill Road end of the site, we're now, we're now focusing on the first homes that will be where we're selling housing from our show area. And they're at, they're at sub level at the moment, as we call them. And those units, once the foundations are in and the sub-ground works are in, they'll be handed over to Redrow to do the brickwork and bring those units out of the ground in the coming weeks. So we've got a number of units in brickwork and in scaffold and what you'll see over the next several weeks and months is those first units coming forward. And we're aiming to complete the first homes and hand over the first plots at that Haverhill Road end of the site by the end of this year. And we checked today, we're still very much on course to achieve that target. So that's where we are at the northern end of the site. We've got, we've got as well, we've got work going on inside the site pursuant to the planning consent, we've got work going on in terms of the highway, which is essentially tied up with agreements that we've got in place with Suffolk Highways and that's around the delivery of the roundabout. Latest update on that has not changed, it's still on target for completion in October of this year. So the programme, as I understand, it's going to be that once that roundabout's online and it can be opened, the temporary construction access that we've got just down the road from that roundabout will be closed up, reinstated, restored, back to its pre-opening condition. And construction traffic will, and residential traffic will jointly use that completed access. And that's, that's, that's obviously the vision for towards the end of this year, we'll have a completed access and we'll start to have those first plots coming forward. In terms of the southern end of the site, which was the focus of the newsletter a couple of weeks ago, we're, we're now, we're now moving forward at the southern end of the site. We've, we were anticipating starting sooner, various reasons have obviously pushed that development programme back slightly, but the ground worker that's been working successfully at the northern end of the site's been appointed to deal with the groundwork package for the southern end of the site. And that's really good news because there's then, you know, complete collaboration and ownership over the project at both ends of the site from a planning delivery point of view. I'm not talking about the commercial aspects of the scheme, but in terms of planning, delivery and control over the operations of those two sites and the project management from a planning perspective and controlling vehicle movements and site construction management, that's really, really, really helpful. On sites like this, you don't necessarily by default always get the same ground worker on different phases. So that's the situation. The immediate activity is focused on site setup at the Chelston Way end of the site. So Andersons have been on site now for a couple of weeks. You'll have seen that there's a temporary vehicle crossover been formed some time ago with a small concrete base, which has afforded sort of temporary access to the site. And that's in advance of the delivery of the roundabout. The compound is being set up and that is a temporary compound. There's some Harris fencing, there's some security gates, we've got some site welfare now erected on that end of the site, which takes the form of a series of containers. But inside those containers, you've got a full office site setup, you've got drying rooms, canteens, storerooms, generators, the usual paraphernalia that goes with a welfare setup. There is security. Deliveries have been very sporadic, minimal at this point in time, but obviously as we gear forward, there's going to be wheel washing and man jet wash on that road. The road's being swept regularly, I believe it's been swept this evening. And we're looking to complete the setup of that satellite sort of compound facility by the end of this month. So that will afford, the programme is that that will afford us the ability to start at the southern end delivering that roundabout on Chelston Way, because obviously a lot of it's got to be built online, which we mean on the highway as an active carriageway and a lot of it's going to be built offline on Redrow land and then it's all got to be joined up and opened. So the temporary compounds around getting us in the ability to start forming the offline elements of that road. What you'll have seen as well is that they're starting to strip some topsoil from that immediate area of the site. There's some cutting and filling work that's got to be done and that's really to facilitate the commencement of drainage to serve the first bit of road and that roundabout that's going to be formed in the coming weeks. So you will start to see over the coming weeks more deliveries at that end of the site, they're going to be closely controlled by West Suffolk. There's going to be shingle brought in, what's called type one crush material to form the base of a road. So there's going to be some activity, it's going to be very closely monitored. We had a bit of an incident yesterday, I gather, where a dumper was brought on site at a restricted time and that's been, been dealt with by Andersons quite abruptly. And we're going to be very closely managing this, we've got a team in place to make sure that this runs smoothly. What we've done is we've proposed to West Suffolk and Suffolk Highways essentially a small phase of development at the southern end of the site, it's a test phase, if I can call it that. We want to demonstrate we can manage our operations successfully at that end of the site. There's going to be some traffic movements associated with it. We're aware of the conflicts and constraints on the road in terms of the school and other receptors in that area. So we've got to manage things very closely, it's going to be monitored, it's going to be managed on the gates, it's going to be managed from a central facility. If and when anything does arise that needs to be tackled, Andersons, whilst they're the principal contractor will tackle it. And when eventually they're handed over to Redrow and we become principal contractor on the site, we will manage it. So we've clearly conveyed what the requirements of the site are, there's some restricted, restricted times where you can't, we're not allowed to bring HGVs down that road. If HGVs are brought down the road, they'll be moved on straight away. The requirement is for suppliers and contractors to bring vehicles to the Haverhill Road end of the site during those restricted times where there'll be waiting capacity on the estate road that we've now built and they'll be managed and released outside of those restricted hours. So we're in the final processes now of agreeing with Suffolk Highways what we're going to do should there be any damage to that road. And we've got proposals in place and Suffolk Highways have got some suggestions in place at how that can be monitored and managed collaboratively between Redrow and Suffolk Highways to ensure that if there is any issues that arise, we can, we can all agree and get those matters resolved and repaired by the Highway Authority quickly. But we're not expecting there to be anything but very, very localised issues over the coming months that warrant further attention. So I essentially just want to sort of convey that we've looked very closely at it, where, you know, it's down to us to sort of demonstrate that we can, we can, we can deliver this satisfactorily, we're aware of the sensitivities around the site and I think we work quite closely, we spent a little bit more time trying to put the right programme in place. But that's going to gear up over the next couple of weeks. And we, we will be making details aware, sharing details for the project manager and the site team at both ends of the site. So visits can be organised if anyone wants to go on site and quiz the team about any aspects of the site setup, they're more than geared up for that, are aware that I'm presenting this evening. And yes, just really wanted to sort of reassure that very careful attention's been given to it. And, you know, hopefully in the next couple of months, if I can come back and speak again, it will be reflecting on a successful sort of start. So any questions really, if anyone wants to ask any detailed questions about what I've said?
Yeah, if I can personally, I've come to a councillor, yeah, I've had a complaint about that dump truck from a resident as being a councillor for that area. Apparently it didn't go the right way where it came up by the jet garage, came up that road, passed the old Westfield School, got stuck on the mini roundabout, apparently been told, I know, true, but damaged the mini roundabout. And, and obviously the person went to see the site manager and he said he was very, very angry apparently about it all because at the time all the children were coming out the schools and there is schools, a lot of schools in that area. And he wasn't pleased as well. So hopefully, you know, this sort of thing won't happen again, especially the way he came as well, which didn't help, you know, getting stuck, them roads are not very nice coming that way. So, you know, they need to be told to either go the sturm way or obviously the, you know, the other way and then perhaps you can get redirected properly after hours. Yeah, the other one is how long with the roundabout on the the Rattin Road? How long, obviously the road would be closed, I presume, for that roundabout to be done? Is that, is that correct?
This is the, this is the road from Rattin Road joins Chelston and delivery of the Chelston Way roundabout?
No, the main roundabout on the main road, the big.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about the junction improvements, the 106 junction improvements between the Rattin Road and the Chelston Way?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the big, the big one, no, it's not, it's along the A143, you know, that, that one, the big roundabout. Obviously that, that's due to be done in October, as you said. Will the main road be closed? Because we had a week closure for the one for the other site and I'm just wondering how long, if it's going to close, how long will it be closed for again? Which is due between now and October, isn't it?
Councillor, just remind me, Chelston Way has also got a designation of the 143, did you say?
No. No, it's, it's the main.
My understanding, my understanding is the Haverhill Road as the A road designation?
Yes.
So just really, I think, I just wanted to clarify then, so we're delivering a roundabout on the Chelston Way, which provides access into the southern development parcel that Redrow are going to be building, very, very close to where our temporary compound's being set up. There's requirements for us to do some further highway works off-site. One is some improvements to the junction where the Chelston Way joins. So it's the, it's the Rattin Road junction as it's described and the other is at the Kangal Road, the Kangal Junction, which is further down near Tesco's. Both of those two latter improvements are some way off in terms of the triggers for delivering those works, albeit as councillor Burns will be aware, we're in early discussions with the Highway Authority about whether or not we might be able to bring the programme of the Rattin Road junction works forward, albeit there's a way to go on that, but we are committed to doing what we can to deliver those works early. Because we're aware that, you know, that's, that's important. But in terms of exactly how we're going to construct the Chelston Way roundabout, as I describe it, for our housing estate or housing scheme and road closures and programmes for doing the online works, because essentially there's some modifications around the road to form that roundabout, we will, we will newsletter those later in the year because we, at this moment in time, don't have the precise details of road closures and, and other aspects that are going to be required to complete that roundabout.
Okay, right, thank you for that. Councillor Burns?
Okay, yeah, thanks Chris as usual and Harriet sitting in the background. The thing that Chris mentioned about the Rattin Road, he's actually referring to the junction of Rattin Road and Chelston Way, where there are scheduled under the S106 agreement to have traffic lights put in and get rid of the pelican lights alongside. I've been, it was something I brought up for the S106 about six years ago. And it's something Chris will know, I've been pestering ever since to get done because it benefits not only the developers but the schools, you know, spending 25 minutes trying to get out onto Rattin Road from Chelston Way when the schools are coming out. Just to confirm the leaflet that was sent out, Chris, that went on our Facebook page, it's pinned to the top, well, not pinned to the top, it's certainly on the announcements. And I certainly received one as somebody living dead opposite the site and I'm sure others did. You mentioned about ram depamntation, that's what I was going to ask about, you gave me a date there, which is good. And I think that's what councillor Handel was referring to is are we going to shut the A143 and I suspect the answer has to be yes. And probably the same length of time, I suspect, the 10 days that was done on the Persimmon side, I would have thought anyway, bit, bit long way away yet. The one I have, you mentioned about Chelston Way of course and highways, we all know Chelston Way surface is pretty diabolical, potholed in places. So obviously equally highways have a responsibility to ensure that they don't try to claim that damage that may occur as being incurred by your vehicles when we know full well. So I'm hoping they're going to do what was suggested a while back, is that, or maybe even yourselves do a precursor video of the road.
We've done, John, what we've done is, in fact, we and Andersons have independently done a detailed visual inspection of that road. And it may be we do a third inspection that complies with specific criteria that Suffolk Highways are insisting is a, I suppose, a recognised county level visual inspection, they're called course visual inspections, CVI's is the industry term. What we're doing at the moment in terms of dotting I's, crossing T's is just trying to agree with Suffolk before sort of activity commences sort of properly, as I suppose is the word, is, is what is, what is the, what is the schedule of monitoring of that road condition going to constitute, who's going to do it? And should any repairs and fixes be required? Agreeing a process with Suffolk Highways because if it's an emergency repair to any part of that road, it will need to be carried out by the Highway Authority using their contractors because we wouldn't have a licence to work on the highway. But there are, there are sort of recharge mechanisms and other sort of tools that we can, we can agree with Suffolk Highways with regards to, you know, ensuring that should there be anything that Redrow are responsible for, you know, we obviously, we deal with that. But as you've quite rightly said, it's, it's, it's a road that's, I'm not saying nearing the end of its life, but it's, it's, it's an old road with a surface on it that's less than satisfactory. There's no restrictions on vehicles at the moment down that road and, you know, we're very mindful of the fact that, yes, whilst our vehicles are going to come down there and use that road, clearly many thousands and hundreds of thousands of vehicles have used that road before. many thousands and hundreds of thousands of vehicles have used that road before now, so. Um, yeah, i- i- we're working on the finer detail with Suffolk highways at the moment to ensure that that's all properly locked down and fairly, fairly represented and and, uh, that, that's really the final detail and that, that, uh, we're, we're, we're resolving with them at the moment.
Yeah, okay, I mean, we locally, we've been trying to get it sorted for a long, long time. Um, yeah, they, they keep patching it, not just the main Chalkston Way, but all the side roads off it as well. All right, the final thing I've got is, um, and again, it came up, uh, at, well, came up planning stage, uh, whenever that was, three or four years ago now. Um, is moving the thirty mile an hour limit on the A one four three further north up towards near the houses. Because I noticed it when I went out for the first drive the other, was it last week when we went to council or something, I haven't been out for many, many months. Um, you come round the bend, uh, and this is what I said when at the planning stage, uh, unless there's a thirty mile an hour sign there, you come round the bend. Uh, uh, you know, potentially sixty mile an hour, and there was an Arctic, HGV, in the middle of the road turning right from the south. Um, so can you try and, uh, with your powers that be, uh, your colleagues, talk to highways again about trying to get that thirty mile an hour moved, it really should be there now because of all the work you're doing alongside. Um, and get people used to the fact it's thirty mile an hour further north, was Chris? That's it, thank you, Jack.
Is there anyone else? Councillor Dave Smith?
Thanks, yeah, um, Chris, on your master plan, it says on there that, um, you've got as marked as E near the local, one local centre, it's up to hundred and twenty extra care units, especially housing for the elderly. Um, have, have you any idea when that, we'd be brought forward, is that part of initial stage or is that, um, somewhere down the line yet?
It's, it, it's down, it's down the line, um, uh, councillor Smith, it's, um, it's, it's, uh, we're, we're, I, I would as- assess it as being several years off yet, uh, in terms of delivery of any, any, any other, um, sort of components of the site in terms of other designations and uses. Um, uh, in terms of the, the, uh, delivery of, of, of housing, um, the focus is at the moment solely on the delivery of the first four nine nine units that have been consented and the open spaces and affordable housing that is, is wrapped up in that reserve matters consent. Um, so I don't have a programme at the moment for the submission of any further reserve matters by Redrow. The landowner obviously has retained, uh, control of various other, um, sort of parts of that phase one site, local centre being one of them. Um, I am aware that some workers have been commenting on that local centre, but, uh, um, they, they will need to report on that separately, I'm not sure what their programme is.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, uh, just come back on what Chris just said, he's quite right, and I don't know whether, uh, people are genuinely in non-ship, it was in the S one oh six. Is that all the local centres, the health provision, all that sort of stuff, is still owned by Mrs Pelly? And it's up to her to bring those forward, uh, as part of the S one oh six, it's not geared to the Redrow purchase. I think it's actually more geared to the remainder of the site, including obviously the country park down there, uh, Couples Road. So just to confirm that, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, um, and Harriet, um, for attending, it's been really good, um, please do it again in quite a few months' time or whenever, you know, so
I mean, is this sort, is this sort of detail useful? I, I, I mean, when, when I live it and breathe it every day, I'm never sure whether I'm just teaching, telling you what you already know or whether or not this is, this is useful.
No, it's, it's very useful because, as I say, being a councillor for that area, um, and I presume other councillors as well, it won't only just be me. Um, you know, we get sort of certain little complaints and then we can say to them, you know, oh, well, I'm going to meet Chris, you know, uh, um, as very soon, um, so in this way we can meet, so. You know, it's, it's really good that you can do it and, and as I say, it's, um, appropriate questions, it might be some hard questions you'll have to answer, but but as I say, you know, it's, uh, it's really good and I'm, I'm so glad that you've, um, you've come and joined us.
And, and Elaine, I, I think the, if we leave it a, a while, I think we need a meaningful update for you on the delivery of the two roundabouts. And I think, um, if, if, if next time we bring our engineer that's dealing with Suffolk highways on to talk about those approvals and about the arrangements for the operation of roads when we're delivering those final elements of the roundabouts, that's probably the next meaningful update to give your order thought.
That'd be great because, um, as I say, that, you know, at least we can, all the councillors will be involved then with that because, you know, the road, very road closing. We do get a lot of people, as we found out, um, do get upset about that, you know, so. And, and also the villages as well around that, the area gets diverted, um, so it, it's really good, thank you very much, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, everybody, I, I've got young children I'm sort of looking after as well, my wife's working, so I'm going to dive off now, but thank you evening, everybody. Thank you, Harriet.
Thank you, thank you, Chris, thank you, Harriet.
Right, next one on the agenda is item seven, which is Stuart McAdams, and he's a planning manager for Simon Holmes. And Lisa, is she here, Lisa Silverton?
Uh, Lisa's not here this evening, uh, councillor Hanlon, it's just myself, I'm afraid, so. Um, not as nice looking as Lisa, so you'll just have to put up with me, I'm afraid. But I'll answer as best as I can, uh, any questions, and I've got a brief presentation I'd like to to do for you all as well, so break it up with some images as well, if that is helpful.
Just please.
Shall I just proceed?
Far away, yeah.
I'll need to share my screen now, so hopefully that will work all right.
Yep.
Can you all see that?
Yep, well, I can. I, I don't see anyone putting their hand up or anything, so.
Okay, is that going to the full size?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much, well, I think everyone knows me by now, but if you don't know me, I'm Stuart McCann, I'm the planning manager for Simon Holmes in Suffolk. So I thought it would be a good idea to touch base, um, tonight, um, and just let you know what's going on. Primarily to talk about, um, phase two B, which has now been resubmitted. Um, and I think it was submitted last Friday, so you've probably got your consultation letter from the council on that, if you haven't got it, you'll be getting it, uh, very soon. So I thought it would be an idea just to touch base with you all. And just to start my presentation, just to remind everyone of the site in question, there is there in the middle of the, the Haverhill Development. And as I say, the revisions went in last week. I don't intend to go through absolutely everything that's come in because we have got a number of consultations uh, have come in and we've addressed them as well. Uh, and also Penny Mills, the case officer, who you all know, um, has made comments as well in terms of design and and other issues as well, but I thought, um, I would focus on the main issues that I took from, um, representations from the public and and at the meeting the last time. Uh, from some of the local councillors on behalf of, uh, local residents. I have with the application resubmission submitted a very detailed letter which outlines the key considerations and the things that we've changed in the application, so. Um, in response to some of the questions you may have later, I'll be able to expand on that. So the main issues, as I saw from our last meeting, was certainly the four-storey apartment blocks was a key issue for you. Uh, the lack of green space coming forward and probably the lack of green space within this particular um, application itself, which is quite a constrained site. And affordable housing was also an issue and I'll touch on that in the presentation shortly. So just to look at the layout and the landscaping, um, and the things that we've done to change the layout. One of the key things was the landscaping along the northern part of the site. So although that actually looks very similar when I put both these images up, there's quite a lot of work has gone on. Um, and when you see larger scale plans, you'll appreciate what we have done. But certainly along this area here, you can see it's quite dominated by the car parking. And it was very close to the hedge which has been removed here and also close to the, the hedge that's been retained, and that's a, a very important hedge, this part here. Um, and we've moved, if you look at the, the image on the right-hand side, the car parking has been moved away from that hedge. And, um, you know, we're protecting the four-metre zone from the base of the hedge to where the development commences here, the private way along the, the northern parcel. That was a, of key concern to, uh, Jackie Fisher, he's the, the council's, uh, landscape and ecologist. So we've done that, we've also managed to, if you look at this north-western parcel here, it was quite scant in terms of landscaping and you can see that we've really beefed up the landscaping to replace that hedge that was removed um, late last year. And within the parking courts, we have, if you notice the parking courts here, there was an in and out of the car parking court in most cases. And we've divided the parking courts, you can see here, there's a wall, a dwarf wall with railings above to divide that. And also in this location here, that was something that was raised by the Design Aid Crown Officer uh, in terms of creating a rat run through, uh, the development, so I think that's an important feature. And you can see in this particular location, we've added some additional trees into the landscaping uh, by moving away the car parking, uh, courts that were in this location here. So I think that's a real plus. Um, in terms of landscaping, we have obviously the area around the Suds Basin, which falls outside this application site and is within the, the, um, infrastructure application, which is currently under revision just now and is expected to be resubmitted for consideration in the next fortnight or so. And you can see that we've added on at the foot of the page here, sorry, is, I've cut it off slightly when I've been cutting and pasting, but you can see the area for the allotments which is provided as additional community facilities there as well. Uh, providing more open space and the connections down either side are retained and into, you can't see it quite in this one, but there's a pathway coming down here, you can just see it there, going into link to Unsettling, uh, Road, uh, the, the southern parcel. And also connectivity was raised as a bit of an issue. You can see in this, uh, plan from the previous submission, it didn't actually link up with the pedestrian crossing, which we're going to put in there, which wasn't very, uh, clever. So we've now, uh, put a desire line through there and a pathway will be connected to the pedestrian crossing as well as one going in this direction as well, so that's, that's another improvement. As I say, open space was a consideration, some of, uh, the residents raised this at the last meeting. And as part of the infrastructure application, which is in just now, the sports pitches, which are located just to the north-east of phase two B, where, uh, within that application, we have now decided to remove that from the infrastructure application and submit a separate reserve matters submission just for this parcel itself. And the idea of that is to bring forward the open space, which will come, um, an occupation of eighty percent of phase one, which is located here and phase two as well, so that is going to be delivered at an early stage. And you can see from this diagram here that it's very close to phase two A and phase two B and immediately adjacent to phase one, so that will serve the new development as it comes forward, and I think that's a real positive. Just looking at the next, um, issue really that was raised, I know it's, uh, it's raised quite a lot of concern um, with yourselves and locals alike. Just, this is the revised, um, proposal for the apartments at the gateway entrance to the site. Now, what we've done is we've reverted back to a three-and-a-half-storey element, but it has this pitch roof on it. So as, I know some of the members had raised concerns, they'd like to see the pitch roof back in the building. Previously, we had, um, a full four-storey element with a flat roof on it and that was to reflect a contemporary approach. But what we've done is we've tried to mimic the two-and-a-half-storey, which was approved on phase one. And we've added this extra level in, if you, if, if you like, a ground floor to make it a three-and-a-half-storey element. But we've ma- made the contemporary twist to it and we've really reinforced the central stack here um, to give a bit more presence and we've got balconies, uh, or Juliet balconies on either side here. And we've got projecting brick banding on here as well and a contrasting grey brick at the ground floor just to anchor it to, um, the ground and give that impression of verticality rather than horizontality, if that's such a word. And you can see, um, thought it'd be useful to show you what we presented previously was the flat roof um, four-storey element and this is the, it, it's bigger, it's larger now um, because it's got the pitch roof effect on it, we can see how it will sit in the street scene, but still providing, uh, a gateway entrance into the site. And just touching on some of the character areas that are proposed in the, um, application amendments. We've got the five character areas here and I'll come to them in turn shortly and give you a flavour of what we're doing here. But we've got the avenue, the urban square, the mews, the neighbourhood square and the rural edges, all slightly different in the design approach. But what we have done now is we have changed a lot of the detailing on the submission. And I'm sure you'll see that, uh, we've incorporated some, uh, grey windows on the designs here, which I think give a real contemporary feel. And that's a big plus, so I did speak to my MD and thought that would make a big difference here, so he's agreed to put grey rather than white U PVC windows in. And you can see the attention to the detailing and the canopies here. And what we've also done is we've completely changed the fenestration in some of these units, they're much deeper now. And they've got deep reveals on them to create a shadow line. Um, this is, uh, an example of the rural edge, this is, uh, the street scene, which is, there's more street scenes in the actual park. But you can see what we've done here, we've got grey contemporary windows, uh, projecting brickwork. Uh, we've incorporated render, that was in previously as well, we've got grey cladding in, flat canopies. Uh, we've changed the door styles as well in some of the units because they, they didn't look particularly contemporary before. And we've got the box sofa and fascia boards, some of these elements were involved in the previous design. And you can see the, the contemporary twist that we've put on the bungalows, which are located on the rural edge around the site as well. I think that works quite work, quite well, hopefully you'll agree. And looking at the avenue and the square, so the avenue and the square, just jumping back to the, um, character area plan, the avenue runs down in the north-south direction and the square is located in this area here. So you can see again the, the contemporary twist here, uh, pulling out some of these, uh, designs. We have, um, the projecting brick detail which I did at the bottom here and the grey brick course going round the building as well. We have flat-style dormer windows in this element here. And you can see that we've got two house types which are the same, but they're both treated in completely different ways, so we have the render on this one. Again, we've got the grey windows, but this one's got brickwork on it, so you can see the differences there. I'm not showing you all the elevations of all the house types because it would take quite a while and you'd probably fall asleep by the time I'd finished talking to you, so I've just given you a flavour of what we're doing here. And again, the neighbourhood square, so I'll jump back and show you, that's the area at the foot of the site, so coming down from the north to a southerly direction here, we've created a, a feature area. And this actually is all the affordable, well, some of the affordable units in this area here. And you can see how we have treated them. Again, tenure blind, so they don't jump out as being different from any of the other house types. And again, we've got detailing, projecting bands here and brick, uh, courses going round the building as well, again, the grey windows. So you wouldn't be able to tell that these are the affordable units, they're tenure blind. The image at the top here probably doesn't do justice, to be fair, but this is a fog unit um, which incorporates parking underneath, so you've got the undercroft parking here. It looks a bit bland, but most of the time there'll be cars within that anyway. Um, so it won't look quite as bland as it maybe appears in this elevation, but it offers another option to um, first-time buyers or for the affordable, um, units here as well. And looking at the mews, which run off the north-south avenue, so in the areas coloured red here. We've got the linked, uh, built form, which was We've got the linked uh built form, which was something that the urban designer at the council was keen to see. And you can see the the underpass here to take you into the courtyard parking area. And again, looking at the details of these houses here, you can see we've switched to contemporary doors here, an element that was raised in previous discussions. And we've got um the brick banding round the centre as well. And again, we've altered the fenestration here to give a deeper than otherwise feel to the windows. Again, finishing grey and they have a deeper reveal to create that shadow line and just create a bit of visual interest. And turning to the massing plan. So you can see where this has been amended. Um this area here, which is now three and a half story, which is in compliance with the design code. The four story element obviously wasn't in compliance with it. So we've reduced that to three and a half story. And the majority, as you can see in this orangey colour, is two story. With the two and a half story scattered about in various locations within the site. And the single story elements, the bungalows I showed you earlier, are shown in the lighter yellow colour in this location. And at the courtyard at the bottom as well. One of the issues raised previously by someone uh in the thing is member of the public possibly at the last meeting was. The distribution of affordable housing. So we've revisited that as well. And instead of having. Uh the sort of two areas here that we had previously, we've mixed it up a bit. So we still have uh an area up here, which is the apartments as you come in and the houses next to it. We've got more houses. Um and less flats, you'll notice as well from this proposal. The flats previously came right along and covered this area here. So we've switched that around and we've now got the four affordable units there. And the apartments are only this block here, which is affordable, and this block here, which is private. And we've uh allocated these two units as affordable. And it's spread out a little bit into this area here. We can see affordable housing as well. So it's much more scattered out throughout the development rather than just being in in two clumps here as it was previously. So that's all I want to say on the um actual changes to the proposals. But I would highlight as well that there's two additional units within the proposals. Because of rejigging the layout, it's actually allowed us to add two more units in. Because we've got less flats um in the the northern parcel. And it still falls within the density figures that are approved as part of the design code. So the two, uh just jumping back to the layout again, two extra houses. Let's see the comparison one. Where's it gone? Yeah, here it is here. It was a little bit tight down here. So we had a terrace of three. We've revamped the area up here and round about the northern parcel, which all looked a bit tight. So we've spread that out a bit and we've actually got uh four detached units down here. Whereas we had a few more in this location previously. So as I say, it's allowed us to put one two nine units in instead of one two seven. And the planning officers at the council were happy with this, as I say, on the basis that it didn't affect the density. So we still fall within the density thresholds as specified in the design code. So just jumping to what's happening next, a little bit about um the sales. I like to do a little resume of what's happening um with the sales. At Boyton Phase One, it's now completely sold out and we're expecting a last legal completion in June of this year. They have all sold extremely well. Uh and with some weeks in twenty twenty, we achieved. Uh five to six reservations a week, such as the demand in Haverhill. You'll be pleased to know that there's all selling very well. And it's been especially um popular for people commuting to work in Cambridge. And the development is also boasting a five star uh Home Builders Federation rating, which we're extremely pleased with. Um and that is an independent survey carried out by the House Builders Federation. And it's based on feedback from our customers. So we're extremely pleased and I'm sure you'll be pleased to to hear that we've achieved that five star rating. Um phase two A uh was launched in February twenty twenty one. And we've received over thirty percent bookings already. Um they've been reserved and we expect the first legal completions on phase two A to take place in August of this year. In terms of phase two B, this is why we're quite keen to get phase two B approved as quickly as we can. Because we want to move through the site from ph- phase two A into phase two B. But we haven't started advertising this as yet because we want to hopefully secure a planning permission as soon as possible. And hopefully um in the June committee, that's what what we're aiming for. That's a little bit about the sales for you. In terms of construction, phase two A, all the internal roads have been completed uh tarmac. All the main services have been installed as well within the development and all foundations have now been completed. Uh on this phase and we're looking to raise the first roofs uh on Tuesday next week. In terms of the infrastructure, the application, as you know, is um in with the council just now. We've made significant changes to the infrastructure application in terms of the road layout. Um and that has been subject of numerous discussions with council officers who have inputted into the um process. The roundabout for the um infrastructure, uh for sorry, the further relief road has now been completed. So we're making a great progress on that. A lot of the infrastructure condition details have linked directly to the infrastructure application. And hence, there's been a bit of a delay in that. So things haven't progressed quite as quickly as we have hoped to on the relief road. But it's still making great headway. So that's, that's a bonus as well. One of the things that I suggested I might do at the last meeting when I spoke to you was set up a website for Haverhill. Uh it was interesting here, Redro also have one as well. So you'll be able to uh see information as it's happening, what's coming next. How the applications are progressing. Um and this is something that's going to come out, hopefully. I was hoping to share this with you tonight, but it's not quite there. But this is the first page for the the relief road, which you can see here as well. So we'll have a host of information on that for people to look at. There'll be a whole load of links as well to the design code, the parameters, plans, the permissions that have been granted. And the applications as they're coming forward and and more updates on the relief road and construction as it takes place. I think that's a real positive. I know councillor Burns will be extremely pleased to see this. And I have discussed it with with him on quite a few occasions, as I have the town council as well. So I'm really pleased. And that's a a real positive um moving forward as well. And talking about moving forward, what's next for um the site? Well, we have been engaged in discussions with uh officers of West Suffolk Council on phases three B and six. And if I just jump back to the phasing plan. Phase six is located here and phase three B in this position here. So we're actively involved in pre-app. We've had a series of workshops. The second one took place last week. And there's another one earmarked, I think, for the week after uh this. I think it's next week. Um phase three B will comprise of roughly a hundred nineteen dwellings and phase six will be about a hundred and ten dwellings. And then the local centre and phase three A, which is immediately next to two B, will come later in the year. Uh as well. And that will provide the retail or commercial aspect as well. So that's something I'm quite excited about. As well as the development really takes in uh shape and provides a hub right at the centre of the development. So I think that's earmarked for probably August time for that one. And phase three B and six, uh June, July time, I think, um of this year. They'll be coming forward as an application as well. So that is my resume of what's happening to date. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on it. And feel free to um ask me to bring up any of the slides that you've seen today. If you want to make specific reference to any of the the content and then, okay, thanks members.
Thank you very much, Chris. Um and congratulations to your board. Um as I say, it's uh. And thank you again for for coming to the presentation. It's really good. Um not only for the councillors, but also for the members of the public, the effects as well. So it's really, really good. Um right, I'm I'm going to the members of the public first and then I will come to the, if you can take the screen off please, um.
Sure.
Stuart, please.
Yep.
It makes it a lot easier for me.
Yeah, I can see.
Even with what councillor Burn said about, which I did do, uh found you still had to click. So this way I can, I can see them easy. Right, um does any members of the public, um I see Mike and Christine and. Brad and Anne uh are here with us again and welcome. I say, I don't know if you, is it, do you, is it um Mike or Christine? Do you wanna talk first, yeah?
Uh yes, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um. Must admit, we were slightly disappointed with the revised plans from the Simmons. Um they don't appear to, they appear to have taken some of our points on board, but not all of them. Um density was always an issue. Um a risk for uh the previous meeting. And we have done very well and we've increased the number of houses on the site. Um. The three and the the story houses, the flats, three and a half stories is the same height as four stories. Uh if you look at the skyline from unsucking road, uh you will see the two A. Appearing ab- above, above the, above the horizon. And I believe that they were the two and a half story. So when it gets up to the three and a half, they will be even higher. The. Other points, um green space, uh no new green space. Uh we've managed to take a piece off the allotment and that seems to be where the two houses have gone. The extra, the extra houses. Um the, where are we? I think there's a lot of cosmetics on there. Um we've tried to wade through. I think the extra seventy eight documents which which appeared. Um slow going, but they, that's um that's the way it is at the moment. We wait and wait for these plans to appear. They suddenly appear and then we are discussing them within days. Whereas they've probably taken weeks to prepare. Couple of other points, which is rising from uh Mr. Adams's presentation. Uh the thoughts of going on to three B and six. Um obviously, there is provision on the site for uh the community area and for schools. For A school. My concern is that these are being pushed back to the end of the queue. We have now, as as said, we have phase one fully occupied. Faith phase two A being occupied, phase two B to come up. Now, the community facilities are on three B and obviously the school. If we these are pushed back by one, two, maybe three years, we we don't have a timescale at the moment. We're gonna find that the, wh- when these facilities were planned. If the houses which are being built at the moment. Um these, the children for school, uh the people for the community who wants to use the community facilities. Um we would have, they will be oversubscribed. So I would think that what we need to do is move forward on the community facility, the school facility. And also, I can understand, yes, the sports pitches are being cleared. Uh but we need green space and we need facilities for the children to play. It is three years down the line for some children, they won't be children anymore. I think. I think that's mainly uh my my point. Um we were promised also a previous meeting. Uh a scenic view from from unsucking road. We would like to see that, please. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Stuart, can you come back on that? Yeah, and then I'll come to you, Anne.
Yeah, sure. Uh no, I appreciate what you're saying about uh infrastructure being delivered in appropriate um timescales. The one oh six covers the triggers for when the community facilities come forward. So the school uh and community facilities um reach trigger points and occupations of a number of houses. And that's uh something that, uh you know, the more we build, the quicker these, these facilities will come forward. We've already made a contribution as part of the one oh six towards the community facilities. I think it was something in the order of two hundred thousand pounds to the council who will develop out these facilities. Uh with that payment. So yeah, the infrastructure will come forward at appropriate times. As I say, the the open space, we've, we're going to hope to bring that forward by separating that out from the infrastructure application. So there will be two pitches that will be provided there. Um and there's also going to be a changing facility as well within that site and um an area of play for youngsters as well. So uh as part of the phasing proposals we submitted uh to discharge conditions on the outline. That was agreed that would come forward um before eightieth occupy or eighty percent occupation of phases one and two. So we are bringing forward some of that infrastructure. Within the site itself, there isn't an awful lot of open space within the site. But um as I um said previously at the meeting, there is an open space strategy for the whole of the site. Which is contained within the design code. Now, we have to provide a a an open space plan. Um as part of that one oh six to see when it will come forward. So that's something we're looking at at the moment. And we wanted to just make the point that we are getting some open space delivered, which, as you saw in the illustration, is not very far from. Phase two B and it's right between phase one and two. So that will serve at least the the residents from these units or the children from these areas. Density, you you did mention, uh quite rightly, we have increased the density by two units. It's not at the expense of the allotments, it's within the developable area. And we've done that and managed to do that by revamping the the site itself. So we've been able to put another two units in there. So it does comply with the approved design code. But you know, this application has just been resubmitted. It's not a done deal and it's gone back into West Suffolk Council. So everyone at the meeting tonight and the town council will have an opportunity to make any further points as well. Um as well, res- as well residents alike as well. So these will be considered an oval round of schemes of. The overall scheme with your planning officers of West Suffolk Council. So it's it's not a done deal. This is what we've taken away from some of the comments we've received and submitted uh as part of the amendments. The uh flats, you touched on the flats again. What we've done is we've replicated the half story. Which is, has been approved on phase one. Now, that was governed to be two and a half stories on the northern edge. So we've gone back to, I appreciate that people didn't like the contemporary approach. And the elevations on the street scene and that main route going through the site. So we added in the interest of the pitch roof there. And it is a half story because the roof space doesn't have. Uh the roof space in there isn't as good as the roof space on the full level. So it is a restricted roof space within that half story. And you can see the dormer windows in there will will demonstrate that. It is fully within the roof space. So while it is ha- it is higher, there's no denying that, we have gone back to the approach, which we thought was the preferences for. Um you know, residents alike to have a three and a half story element there. So again, we'll be, we'll wait and see what the planners say about that. And I'm interested to see it, to hear what some of the other views on that is tonight as well. Um I think I've covered most of the things you raised raised there. Um if there is anything else you want to come back, please do.
Thank you very much, Anne. Anne, you're, you're muted.
Hang on, hang on. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Yes. Uh, thank you for the presentation, Stuart. Uh, I think first of all, you have taken also the things we said and we do really appreciate that. And I do, I, I, I do believe some of the detail you've shown us, that the quality of the detail on the buildings is better. And also the fact you've broken up the gateway slightly better. We're still absolutely struggling with this density issue, which I know that within the code you were allowed to build. I understand between forty four and fifty five, whatever it is, density stuff. I, I couldn't get to the bottom about understanding about the density on this site. Because it's only recently we've realised the density gets greater as it comes in towards the centre of this kind of created new little town or whatever. I think we all everybody I talked to thought the density was more on the outskirts where you've got the ring road. And so we've really had to, to come to terms with this. And also, when I talk to people, they're unaware that this was passed in two thousand and fifteen and we're not exactly sure how, never mind. The point is, I did talk to you about density at the time, I didn't understand that it was set already in the summer. And you said there was some flexibility on that. And I understand it's between forty four and fifty five, something like that. And what I want to ask you, Stuart, is, you said there was some flexibility. You seem to be saying it's a constrained site. I've just heard you say that. And yet you've added another two buildings to that. I think the problem with the site is we've been struggling, it's like an elephant in the room, the constraints of the site. And you're still trying to pack it. If you look at the density on there compared to two A, it's much greater. Density on two A, it's greater than one. If you look at parts of one, the density is not, I think, high. I'm just looking at some of the, um, reviews on people who've actually taken a house up on one A. And, um, one of them was new build, narrow roads, no park, uh, very little parking. And that was from the one A section. Um, my concerns are the density here looks too much. And, and my, my plea personally would be instead of saying we have to meet top load, that what, I mean, what is the density, Stuart, on this area? Can you tell me? Because we're here, it's within the constraints, but what are they? What is that?
Yeah, well, the density here is up to fifty five.
Yeah, the maximum for the constrained site.
Uh, yeah, and, and, and we're not up at fifty five. I think we're just shy of fifty five.
Yeah.
There's one, one element of it, which is, um, to the east, I'm just looking at the density map here next to Boyton Hall Farm. Um, that's a slightly lower density. So down that eastern side, the density is slightly lower, but overall the density doesn't exceed the thresholds in there. I don't have.
I understand you're saying it's not past the threshold, but it's also because you're allowed to go up to that threshold doesn't mean to necessarily, that's what every builder should do to I can understand you need to make profits. I mean, I understand person amazes him well, with low inflation this, this year anyway. Um, you don't always have to go to that. And surely there's some balance between what's, what creates a good area and a good building site. A building area. Let's do, you know, by, by making it work. And there's still, you're talking about green space. I understand there's a sports centre now, sports area going up there. And we've got kind of down the subs bit, but we're talking about all the time, we've been talking concern about lack of functional space in the development. It was the same on two A and it was pushed aside. On one A, there's one A, it's no, no such site. And it's about in a community that is functional, isn't a private site. So if you've built allotments, by the way, would, you know, maybe it will happen. That is not a public site, that's private. If you, if you, when you build a sports area, that will be restricted for other people. Sorry. So, sorry, sorry, Alan.
Yeah, Alan, Alan wants to come in.
Um, Chair, i- it's highly relevant. Chair, I'm massively stressed. I cannot hear Anne reliably because your audio keeps cutting in and out. Is it possible, Anne, that you could turn your video off while you're addressing us? Because I suspect that will improve your audio. I don't know, but I hope it will. Thank you.
Other people having the same problem.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that is, that is happening. And, um, um, as I say, um, with Alan, i- it's a bit different to what we, we are. So he's, and I'm, I'm struggling, I must admit.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I was clear.
No, you, you wouldn't know. You wouldn't know.
No, Stuart, can you hear?
Yeah, we can hear you much better now.
I can hear you. I think I picked up most of the things.
I just do a very quick recap for people who didn't hear. What I was talking about is because the, um, whatever it's called, the, um, the code has been set between forty four and fifty five. Stuart has said that it actually is near the top end of the five. Is it always the case that you have to always go for the maximum when you can sit, when it was considered a constrained, uh, constrained area? Because of the topology, we always have to go to the top end of that. And is there not some obligation on half the builder and the, and the county to do the best they can? And Ron said, we're very happy to have another few buildings stuck in there. And there's no green space within that area that is really worth having. And it's one thing to have, uh, sorry, a sports pitch. And it's another thing to have allotments. They're all, they're not public spaces, informal public spaces. There's no way within that, that site or two A, anyone to sit down, have a little chat, to meet. The streets are still very narrow. It's all kinds of problems as far as I'm concerned. And all I would ask is, is it not possible for them to, you know, pull back a bit on the amount of building they have to put in there and stay within their code? Does it have to be fifty five? That's my question. And I, and I have to say today, I'm looking across at what's just been built. And we've got a three story house, a three and a half story. They've only got up to third story and it's completely dominating the skyline. So, sorry, Stuart, I would, I would like to recap some of the stuff you've done as well.
And some of the points. So I've been making some notes here. You're absolutely right. Phase two, uh, B is a higher density than phase one and that is because it's in line with the approved design code. The densities for phase one are thirty five to forty five. So around the rural edges of the site, they are, and quite rightly so, a lesser density. And as you move into the local centre area, the densities do increase. And again, on the northern parcels moving through the development next to the relief road, the density reduces down there again as well. I thi- think what I would like to say is that, you know, we buy land based on densities and parameters set at outline application stage.
Yeah, I understand.
So, uh, you know, if we bought a piece of land, and this is an extensive piece of land for up to eleven hundred and fifty dwellings. You know, we do deals based on what we can hopefully build on the site and that can significantly affect, um, you know, the return on the land. We, we can't, you, you quite rightly pointed out, we're a business, we're we're in it to make money, we're a PLC. But these developments must, uh, achieve, you know, good urban design, good layouts and everything as well. And that's for the local authority to determine and be mindful of the comments made by residents and town council and consultees alike. So yes, we have gone up to the upper limits of the densities, but we're entirely allowed to do so. Um, assuming that we have done an appropriate fashion. And the other thing I would say, you mentioned about open space. There's an open space strategy. There's an open space master plan. And I don't think you can just look at pockets as they come forward in isolation, because they sit surrounded by um, allotments, there's, um, green routes on either side of this development to provide linkages to the sports provision, uh, and to the open space beyond that. So um, I don't think you can just look at it in isolation. I think you have to appreciate what has been approved in terms of open space provision.
Thank you. Yeah. Is it relevant? Is it relevant to that, to what you just said?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Just to say, um, yes, I understand that you have to make money on everything. But when it's set between forty four and fifty five, that means your margins must be allowed within those areas. Rather than having to sit, always has to be at the top end of that. And I do know that person's made a lot of money in the last year. Um, but the functional space is different to a space that is beside a ditch, beside a soup or spit, uh, uh, pitch. And I think every area should be considered as having its own little pocket of uh, green or fuck place to be. If you look at the site of Buxton, every single area has got a square, green square within it. And we got moved away from that when it's got worse. Anyway. I think I've said my, thank you and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Um. Michael, I'll notice you, you put your hand up, but, um, we've got, we've got thirteen application, which is a ap- absolute record, um, to go through. So I've got to bear that in mind. So is it, is it a very quick question?
Um, one, one very quick question for Stuart. Um, he mentioned at the last meeting about reversing the poles on the fencing on the public footpath. We're still waiting.
Right, I will look into that. That should have been tackled. So I do apologize for that. I'll speak to construction about, about that and see if we can get that sorted out. As part of the website, which I touched on earlier as well, this is a very thing that I was wanting to put on as a good news story, so that when we did something wrong, it would flag up that we've rectified and I have to apologize if that hasn't been done. Because I did say I would, I would look into that and I did. And it clearly hasn't been done. So, yeah, I'll take that up and report that to powers to be.
Thank you. And councillor Mason? Uh, you're muted.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'll, I'll try and keep it short for brevity. Uh, okay, so in short, uh, the uh, s- some of the visualisations that Michael and Christine mentioned from An Suckling, I'd really like to see those from An Suckling's Road looking north, not just, uh, showing the, uh, the allotments, but actually, uh, how the buildings dominate the skyline beyond the allotments, uh, when you're looking north. Really appreciate it if we could have visualisations of that. I'd like to have a visualization also, uh, on the plans. It doesn't really show how the buildings in the, uh, south uh, southeast corner, uh, impact upon Chapel Farm cottages, which aren't really shown on the map. So I'd, I'd very much like a, a visualization so that we can see how this estate is kind of coexisting with, uh, some very valued buildings that are in our locality. Uh, what, one of, just touching upon green spaces, uh, one of the, uh, uh, conversations I'm having with people is, uh, green spaces that have amenity, but not functionality or facility. And so, uh, if I look at one A and one B, for example, there's lots of green spaces, but there's no benches to sit at, there's no functional use. So if somebody goes out for a walk, let's say they're elderly, infirm or they're injured, uh, they can't actually walk any great distance uh, before they have to then turn back home. There's no point. So I'm looking at the square and it may not necessarily be relevant, but it's, it's a tiny thing. Could we have, for example, a park pensioner bin put in that centre square? Because otherwise it is just a green space. It has amenity, but it has no function. And for me, one of the things that is lacking is the amount of green spaces that have no function that are used. And they tend to be almost like wasteland areas. And I've definitely seen that across one A and one B. And many of the spaces that are outside of two B are going to be these kind of alleyways of walkways. Uh, parkland running through. And we just need to make sure that it's not just amenity, but it's nice to look at, but it actually has some function, uh, for the community as well. Uh. I'm a little bit concerned about the lack of visible green space within the development. So for example, you showed a street scene, uh, I think it was, uh, scene E, uh, E to F, which is on the periphery. Uh, there's an increasing trend with housing developments, but there is no lawn out front or, or very, or it's very minimal. And on the plans, uh, i- it's quite clear that there's no significant gaps between buildings that offer any green space. I'm very much interested in the mental health and wellbeing of, of residents within each development. I can understand to some extent with some frustration about the high density that is for this plot. But it's high density and a lot of brickwork with no, not an awful lot of green space. And the one green space in the middle has a path running through it. And hasn't, doesn't appear to have any, uh, uh, function or amenity use other than just it being a green space. So one of my frustrations is we'd like to see the broader plans, Stuart. Uh, so yes, I know this is the plans that have been presented for two B, but I'm getting an awful lot of comments about residents are saying, well, when are we going to see the plans where the children's play parks are, are uh, being plotted down. And also, you know, there, there was that question about the building of a school. Well, it would appear that the community space that many people thought which was going to be a separate hall is now going to be within the school. And, but, you know, at what point is there going to be conversations about, uh, facilities? Because if I look at the Meadowlands Estate in Haverhill, which is part of the Haverhill North Ward, it was built with no community space. If I look at the Handchats, which is, uh, on the west of the town, it was built with no community space. There is a real shortage of available community spaces. And my fear is, uh, uh, if you build it within the school, it's not going to be available during the day for mothers and toddlers group. Now, I know this is off point, but when are we going to see those broader plans where there can be a discussion about those community spaces? Because I think the fear is, looking at two B, it's a massive dense housing with limited green space. We can see that on the local centre, uh, tucked into, is it three B? But we, we, I think the community needs reassurance that there is a cohesive plan that we're not just going to go from one building development to another, but we kind of know what we're going to be getting. Now, there's an awful lot there and I'll, I'll stop for purposes of brevity. Uh, I just wondered what you thought.
Yeah, no, sure. Thank you for making these points. And certainly in visualisations, we hadn't produced one yet because, um, we didn't quite know how the, the apartments were going to turn out. So we can do a visualization of that now to show you how that will look. Is it, uh, what you're looking for, a section through the site from An Suckling Road to the north? Um, showing the built form in between there. And that, that would address, um, your concerns there. Or maybe not address them, but at least demonstrate how the lay of the land is. So we can do that. Um, the building in the southeast corner and Chapel Farm cottages, again, is a section through the site to show that in respect of the cottages and the new build forms, is that what you're looking for? Or you wanted to see what the street scene would look like in the southeast corner?
Yeah, it's, it's whatever view that demonstrates what impact the, the new development has upon those Chapel Farm cottages.
Okay, I'll, I'll have a look into that as well. The green spaces, taking board your point about, um, amenity and not functional, functionable. Um, there is a green space in the heart of the site, as you've quite rightly highlighted. I didn't mention it earlier, but there is a pocket park in the middle. I see no reason why we can't provide some benches, uh, to create areas within the site. That's right at the heart of the development in the avenue. And it might appear quite small on the plans before you, but actually, it's quite a large area. So I think that could be a focal point where we could put some benches where mothers and toddlers could meet and sit on a bench in the sunshine when the, when the sun does decide to come out. And likewise, round the green roots and the lungs on either side of the development and leading to and round about the, uh, Suds Basin, which is part of the infrastructure. So that's something I will look into as well. And I made a note of that. I think that's extremely important. The, uh, sports facilities, the, the pitches, which are going to the northeast will have some play facilities there. Uh, the plans have been, um, prepared for the landscaping to go with this application and that reserve matters for the pitches. So they will very shortly be presented and you can see the facilities that will be uh, delivered as part of that, uh, proposal. And again, benches there, absolutely. If there's play facilities for, for children, you want the mothers to sit and, and watch over them as well. So take a, totally take on board what you're saying about that and we'll certainly, uh, look into that. As part of the open space strategy is a requirement of the one oh six. I've discussed that with Penny Mills and we will be pulling together a strategy for the open space and the delivery of that throughout the whole of the development. So watch this space. Hopefully that's something that will be coming very soon to you as well. So I've made a note of that as well. And, uh, the other thing is the three A as part of the thing is, the three A, as part of the remodeling of the infrastructure application, uh as part of the local centre, which comes with three A, there will be a plaza as part of that development. The route round the site was supposed to go right round the entire site and a ring before. It's now only gone round on three sides, if you like. So the plaza will present another open space facility, and that has been highlighted in the design code as well. So it's going to be probably bigger than we first imagined, because there won't be a root going right down the front of it. That will probably offer something different. It won't be a green space. It'll be hard surface, but again, with benches uh offering a meeting point beside the new shops and the higher density part of the site and opposite the school site as well, where people can drop the kids off at school and then go and maybe have a coffee or buy a newspaper or just sit and chat with some of the other mothers from the school as well. So I think it's all moving in the right direction, but maybe there's a bit of work for us to do to probably sell it a bit better.
Can I just come back on one point, Chair? Um Stuart is
Very quickly, because we've got councillor Manis at once coming as well.
Sorry. Uh are are you saying that within the existing plans, a separate community building or space is not going to be part of our of the plans uh as being separate from the school? The community, I've got a number of residents asking that question. And we need to know what uh facility is going to be available. Because my main concern is, on the north ward, there's very little uh hirable community space.
Yeah, as part of the pitches, one, I keep referring back to that, there will be a change of facility. So that meets one uh demand, if you like, for youngsters or whoever playing football on the pitches. So there will be change of facilities as part of that. You're right in terms of the community facilities, the sum of money we've paid, I think, was earmarked for a joint use with the school site. So what tends to happen, I'm sure you're aware, on other sites where the education facility has pitches for school use, tend to be opened in the evening as well. And I think it would be a linked facility. I think that was the idea, that the money that we've paid would provide additional facilities which form part of the school during the day, but into the evening and the weekends would provide a community use as well.
All right, thank you. Councillor Manis?
Uh thank you, Chair. Uh Stuart, the uh presentation we had before was from Redrow, saying he was gonna do, or he is doing, a newsletter to residents.
Yep.
Something that Perseman could do, although I did hear you just say that you're gonna do a website. Website would probably keep us updated better than um a newsletter. Uh can I have your views on that, obviously, very, very quickly?
Yeah, sure. Thanks for your comment. Um the website should be up and running, as I say, this week. Um now, what I would like to do as well, if the town council could do this, potentially put a link on their website as well. So um people can look, if they're going to town council website, do a link and go straight to ours. Um if people out there have got Facebook and can put it on, a Facebook link as well, we could do that. I think we've got our own Facebook link, which we could put it on as well. Um and a leaflet, I don't see why we can't do a leaflet in addition to the website, um round the houses that are most significantly affected by the new development lease, and they're on the doorstep. Uh and that's something we could certainly look into as well.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councillor Burns?
Very quickly.
I'll try. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've realized I've got a meeting, but I'll have to go over nine o'clock, won't I? I'm afraid. Um the website, I was just about to say, I think Stuart, wherever you are, they've gone. Um I think it's worthwhile extracting the S one oh six, um which which I've said many, many times was not really worth the paper it was on, because it was very badly written, and it obviously predates Perseman by two or three years. Um uh but I I think it's worthwhile extracting the relevant bits that have been asked tonight. Um equally, the master plan, uh which was approved in two thousand and fifteen, but first came to the table in two thousand and nine. Uh that's got all the density planning on it. And I know at the time that residents were consulted a lot on densities that there, which I think is an average of, uh I think it was something like forty-six units per hectare as an average across the whole site. And, you know, it goes up and down.
Yeah.
Um couple of things outside this this to be very quickly, um just to let know people know. Um I've been on at highways about the lack of signing of the new roundabout, and primarily just for benefit people here, uh there were signs, but they've been stolen. People have been cut coming along and bulk cropping them off. I saw a picture this morning. Um so but they're going to be putting ones on poles soon. And also, Stuart, if you could let us know as soon as possible when you anticipate the relief road will be completed. I know you said it was delayed a bit.
Yeah.
Um because we need to quite early on start advising the military and all these people who are going to be involved with it. Thank you very much. That's all.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Come back in a couple of points. The one oh six is very lengthy uh for the layperson. It is not easy to understand. And as part of the website, I have actually done a summary, which I passed to our IT person. So thank you for your comments. I think they're entirely appropriate. Um and we'll also have links to the design code, the master plan, so that people can go in and better understand why things are coming forward in a certain way. So we're trying to keep it simple and make it relevant for people who can pick it up and don't particularly understand planning and can see things quite easily and hopefully help with their understanding of things. So thanks for your comments.
Right. Thank you for that. Thank you, Stuart. Um again, and thank you for your updates. It's been really good, not only for us, but for the public as well. And thank you for the public as well for attending. Thank you, Brad and Anne. Anne, I think the other two have gone. Oh, no, no, they ain't. I apologize. Michael and Christine, thank you very much. Um I've just no issue. My eyes are getting funny already. Right. Uh now we must go on now to the next item on the agenda. Um and thank you for
Thanks very much for everyone.
Thank you, Stuart.
If anyone does go, yeah. Please feel free to come directly to me, and I can help.
Thank you for that. We will. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. You can you can let go now if you want to or stay. Right. Thank you very much. Um right, the next one is um for members of the public um to say anything other than the planning applications. And I think they've just gone now. So or my oh, Michael's, Michael and Christine still there. Oh, and Brad and Anne. But if you want to say anything other than the um than the planning applications, no? No? Right, okay. Right, next one is um to consider, I imagine, to consider planning applications to West Suffolk Council. Um and which is A, which is uh there's none on the item A, but it's list, list A, I should say, list B. Um we've got, I should, I should, I won't go through um all the word. What I should do to save time is just give you the the actual number and um the the area, the the address, which is DC twenty-one zero two eight three, which is a TPO. Um and everyone knows what that is. This is too Broad Street. Colleen, can you sort of click it up? Councillor Greenie?
Uh Chair, it has actually been determined.
Yeah, we already commented on this.
Oh, right. Okay, that's good.
Sorry, if I could, Chair, interrupt, Chair. It was um it went through delegation panel last week.
Oh, right.
That's why it's not there.
So was it okay, I suppose, was it? Does anyone know?
It was refused.
It was refused.
Oh, refused. Oh, right. Okay, right. Okay. Um item three. Um on the, which is eleven Julian Close, which is DC twenty-one eight zero eight three six. I presume everyone knows what it entails. So I'd be reading it all out. All right, so anyone want to come in here? Councillor Dave Smith?
I mean, the problem here seems to be they're they're trying to build a garage, and the garage has um hasn't hasn't got a drop curve anywhere near it. Uh I don't actually see that arrow on the other cursor. That's where the garage is going to be, out to the road. Yet the drop curve is where the car is parked over there. So um I can't see how the car is going to get to that drop curve around the corner of the house.
Yep, there's. Any more?
I will. I will, Chair.
Councillor Stichcombe?
Thank you. Also, I mean, this isn't relevant to what we're looking at in a way, but I don't think their application to widen the existing drop curve is going to succeed because the criteria say say that there is a strict limit of um six point uh sorry, five point five metres maximum for for um for a sh- is that? Sorry, I'm confused now. I think it was a shared access because it should currently it's shared with a neighbour. And unless it's way short of that maximum, uh well, sorry, unless it's already short of that maximum, which which the plan, which the um sketch indicates that it is not, um they they can't apply for anything, anything, anything wider. So it's, you know, I think the whole thing is 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 a mess.
Yeah, can I also say that the garage is way below um minimum standard as well? And if you look on the actual map, if it, because it's it's got five by three point three metres, um but whereas the minimum standard is seven by four metres. Well, if that, if they put seven by four on there, encroach onto the walkway, onto the pathway, onto the pavement. So, you know, that and also, they want um a in this particular small garage, they want a a room as well in it on the plans. On the, yeah, on they want a little small room in with it as well. So why they're applying for another garage? Um I don't know. I I think personally, they're going for an office, but but that's that's my just my personal opinion. Um but as I say, it's it's uh it's really strange, you know, it's just considering the person is a builder as well, um it seems strange that he's come out with these sort of things. It's it's been mentioned about its drop curve as well. But is there anyone else? Councillor John Burns?
Yeah, I I just a couple of things, just to follow up on what's just been said. Um six by three metres is the size of a garage. Um so it's not, it's not actually long enough. It's wide enough, but not long enough. And councillor Stinchcombe is dead right. I actually saw the highways engineer down my road uh last week, and a neighbour opposite has tried to do the same thing. And he was told, uh what he actually said to me, there's no way we're going to approve this because it's an extension of an existing drop curve. Um so I think he's going to have a problem extending that drop curve. But that's not necessarily our problem, but um uh certainly the size of the garages.
Yeah, I've I've got this seven by fours on on um the latest advisory, because that's the thing, it's advisory, the these.
Uh yeah, I think that's for disabled.
Um, yeah, it might well be.
Six by three, I think, is what I've got. Yeah. Okay, don't remember whatever. But yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not what, it's not long enough anyway, whatever happens.
Yeah, it was still encroach on the pathway, even with that. Uh councillor Davidson?
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. I went round there this afternoon, Chairman, and basically it they've already started working, to be truthful. And there is already a garage there. He's got a garden office that you can see when you um go on to whatever. But um yeah, the the garage is going to be an office, even though he's saying he's going to put a shutter in, I would assume that he will just change it over to an office once he's got the permission. So I think we should object to this.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Right. Is there anyone else? No? But can I have the, is that proposal then? Oh, what's happened, dear? I've lost, I've lost everything.
Well, Bruce has proposed unwilling to second.
Come down. Sorry, I'll look. Everything went then. My Zoom thing come up, but I'm back again now. Right, okay. Um proposed from councillor Davidson and seconded by councillor Stichcombe that we object on the grounds that we've just stated. All those in favor, please show. Any against? One, two against? Any abstentions? One abstention. Right, that's carried then. Okay. The next one on the agenda is the item four, which is um DC twenty-one zero nine five five TCA. This is in at Shaughn Tree Mills High Street. Right. Any comments?
Yeah, Chair, could you, yeah, could you read the descriptions out, please? Because members of the public won't have a clue what we're talking about if you haven't told anyone what what the proposals are.
Okay. Right, I was I was just thinking because of saving time, but um, okay, I will, I'll read it out. Right, this is one beach, T one on plan, overall crown reduction by two metres to previous points, one sycamore, T two on plan, fell, taken down, one sycamore, T three on plan, overall crown reduction by two and a half metres. Or is there any comments on that? No? Councillor Crooks?
Proposed neutral, Chair.
Okay, proposed neutral from councillor Crooks. Councillor Greenie, you second that? Put your hand up. I noticed. Or do you want to talk?
No, I was just gonna say, just that there seems to be a lack of details, the fact that they're they're going to remove a remove a tree. Um should we not have some information on on what what exactly they are removing first?
Well, it says on T three on the plan is the one where the what they're removing. Um.
T two.
Sorry, T two. Yeah. Um there's councillor Smith, Dave Smith, and councillor Burns?
Um yeah, I think the reason they're they're giving for chopping down is because it's impeding the the beach trees, which they want to keep. Um I'm not an expert on trees, um but if anybody's hasn't got any real objections, I would um second the proposal to be neutral on this.
Okay. Councillor Burns?
I only thought, as sort of councillor Lokerini alluded to, there's no arboricultural report on any of these trees, particularly the one they want to fell. Um it's right over the far side of this this site. Um and I'm assuming there is, I'm assuming they think they're experts, or they have got advice and haven't bothered telling us about it. In the past, you know, in the past, the committee would look and say, always say the same thing. There's no arboric, you know, there's no expert advice on why they want to do this, or particularly the felling of the of the sycamore. Okay.
Well, okay, is any more comments at all? Councillor Davidson?
Yeah, I totally agree with what's been said. I can't understand why they want to fell um a sycamore tree. They seem to be saying because there's too much shedding. Um I'm not an expert, but yeah, I don't think we should just um agree to it.
Okay, well, we've had a proposal and a second uh for um neutral. Um so I'm going to take that vote first, and obviously we see how it goes. But we've got a proposal from councillor Crook, seconded by councillor Dave Smith. All those in favor of neutral, please show. All those against? That's four. Right, two against, four, four, two against. Okay, that carried. Neutral. Right, the next one is item five, which is DC twenty-one zero eight seven five HH, small A, infill extension between dwelling and garage, small B, single story rear extension, replacement of of existing. Extension, that is. Any comments on this one? Any comments on this one? No? Uh, councillor Davidson?
Unless anyone else has got any comments, I would say neutral on this one.
Okay. Is that a proposal?
Yep.
Okay. Councillor Smith?
I'm saying that.
Okay, councillor Stitchcombe?
I was just going to second, but it's okay.
Okay, right. So let's propose neutral by councillor Davidson, seconded by councillor Dave Smith. All those in favour, please show. Okay. So that's carried. Uh, item six, which is DC twenty one zero eight eight six HH, fifteen white Carville um, or Cavil, single story rear extension of it's, is there any comments in this one at all? I've noticed that number fourteen is, um, commented about the carbon monoxide flu going direct into the garden. Um, I've, I had to add mine sort of change because it went into next door's garden. And that's coming to mind. So, and apparently my, the person who put my new condensary and told me that it's now illegal for a flu to go into somebody else's garden. I don't know how true that is. Um, so I think that should be pointed out that the flu should be, um, shouldn't be going into number fourteen's garden. Oh, uh, councillor Dave Smith?
Just, I think it's pretty obvious from the plans where the flu is going, um. But, uh, if there isn't the case, there's, it will be the next door's garden. Then I think the, um, turning off some group of that, I would hope anyway.
Yeah, there's no stopping us to comment on it because of, um, you know, because of number, yeah, they will pick up and because number fourteen has, has put it in.
Yeah, we can know their comments, aren't we, really?
Yeah. Okay, so where should we go on this one other than that comment? Councillor Davidson?
Am I missing the obvious? But I couldn't find an application.
Oh, I found it. Is there anyone else?
Number was wrong. On the application form, the number was wrong. It should, on, on our agenda rather, it should have read zero eight eight six. I can put it on screen.
Yeah, I must admit, I must admit, I, um, I put the address in and that's why I've got it up. And I noticed that, that that, you know, but you said councillor Davidson today, I think you wrote in and said that that's a wrong number, didn't you? Right, um, right, you, has everyone managed to see this one? You have, right. So they must have done the same. Councillor Davidson, then you, you, did you look at it? Because you did.
I did, I did look at it, but I just didn't see the application form on the corrected number. And I can't get up at the moment.
Right, co- do you want to, do you want to?
No, apart from that, I'm going neutral on this. But I just didn't think of an application form there.
Right. I confirmed the application form is not on that website at the moment.
Right.
That's why I couldn't see it.
Right, okay. Right. Um, so can I propose a then sc- councillor, are you proposing neutral councillor Davidson? Yeah?
Yeah.
Right, can I have a second please? Councillor Stitchcombe? All those in favour, please show. Neutral? Yep, uh, councillor Brown, did you? Did you, um, want to vote against or?
No, I, I voted with, I voted.
Oh, did you? Sorry, you must have put down, down quick.
I thought I was just waving at you, but.
Right, okay. Right, the next one is, um, item seven, which is DC twenty one zero eight nine two HH, this is sixteen biscay close, small A, single story front extension, small B, two story rear extension. Um, I noticed it is being converted to a four bedroom from a three bedroom. Any comments on this one? No? Um, councillor Stitchcombe?
I'll propose neutral on this.
Okay. Can I have a second for neutral then please? Councillor Crooks, right, thank you. All those in favour of neutral, please show. Yeah, that's everyone. Thank you. And the next one is DC twenty one, which is number eight, um, DC twenty one zero seven nine two F U L. Block one. SR Builders Station Road. Um, any comments on this one? Uh, councillor Greenie?
I have a few things on this. Um, there's no parking provision, um, there's no cycle provision, uh, no bin storage. Um, they're knocking down, uh, there is, is there bin storage?
Yes, and cycle storage.
Oh, okay. So I missed that then.
It, it's tiny. You have to really zoom in on the, on the plan, but it is there.
I couldn't enlarge the plan properly. It just went blurry.
Ah, but there's a, there's a second plan that is clearer on. I agree. There are two plans. One is ever so blur and the other one is better.
Okay, scrap the last of it. There's no parking anyway. Um, they're knocking down a Victorian stable block. Um, if you notice, actually have some, some more information on that, maybe some pictures of it. Um, yeah, I can ask it for me.
Okay, is there anyone else? Councillor Davidson? Ooh, all right, then councillor Smith, then councillor Brown.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Ken, um, with this about the parking. Um, there is no parking, but obviously there's a car park to the rear. So presumably the people could get parking permits. And there's also parking at the front. Once again, you need to get parking permits. It's not clear to me at the moment. It's not clear to me at the moment if the section at the front. Sorry, dreadful interference.
Yeah, there's, can you mute yourselves all, all of you?
Dave, Dave needs to mute.
And, and you, I don't, I don't.
I'm, I'm muted with a switch in my hand. I don't need to mute, uh, on the, uh, the, I'm not interfering.
Right, okay. So that's it.
I went to see, I went to see the property, I went to see the property this afternoon and obviously at the moment there's like four, um, upright, um, what's it called? Things so that you can't get into the property. I don't think they will still be there, um, once the place is developed. But there is obviously parking, potentially parking for four cars unless that's going to obviously be developed. And I would think it could be developed because it would then be in line with the first three cottages, um, but the last two cottages, it's in the middle. Um, it's, it's an awkward, um, place. I agree that we've got to be very careful about this, but I mean, it is a, a property that has not been used for many, many years. And it is quite a bit of an eyesore. So it's going to be done sympathetically. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Dave Smith, then councillor Brown?
Um, yeah, I think the parking at the back is specifically for the people that live in the bike cycle supplied by Tesco's. So I think that's an option. Um, yeah, it's, they're talking about a three story building here, which looks to me totally out of keeping with the row of houses. It's going to be seen between, um, especially the one next door, the number three, which I think is a single story. This is going to be right against it. So there's going to be a huge amount of, um, light loss double the fault from that property in particular. Um, there wasn't really any details in, as to room sizes. They seem to be sort of like small flats with a single occupancy, but, um, yeah, um, they could just be twenties to me. Um, yeah, um, pretty much agree what everybody else has said. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Brown?
Yeah, it does seem like, um, overdevelopment of a, of a quite a small site. Um, yeah, the old stable block, you know, it is an integral part of Haverhill's history. It'd be sad, you know, to see it go. It is in a very good, you know, condition. So yeah, unfortunately I can't see, you know, it having to go. Um, what I would ask as well is that there's a column that's got a date carved into it. Just wonder if that could be incorporated into, you know, if, if it does get developed somehow into the building, um, or a column outside with, with that uh, date on it. It's a lovely piece of Haverhill's history though. Yeah.
Very good point. Thank you. Councillor Crooks?
Yeah, it, it, you know, ideally we'd love to see that building converted, you know, someone could go in there and do the floorboards and make a lovely single dwelling, but obviously it doesn't look like that, that will happen because the application has come forward. I think the hit, that there is history that there, there was planning application approved on this site for two dwellings, I believe, about seven, eight years ago. So you've got to bear in mind, but that was just for two dwellings rather than the, rather than the five. Um, yeah, the Prince, the Prince of Wales cottages, um, obviously that was the Prince of Wales pub. And, and, um, if you look at the front on Station Road, the, the post that Tony's talking about, it's got eighteen sixty five. Because, because that is the birthday of, um, George, George the fifth, isn't it? Our king, you know, that, that, that was George the fifth when he was born, eighteen, eighteen sixty five. Um, so I, I would like to see a development where that, that actual wall and that gateway is kept. I really would. I, I, I don't know if, um, Colin could go to Station Road on, on Google Street View and you can, you can see how the wall is attached to the Prince, Prince of William.
Right, councillor Burns?
Me, me again. Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, it's a shame as, as councillor Crook says, um, I'd much rather see, you know, we've said many, many, many times before, we've got virtually no historical buildings in this town. Um, and obviously the railway came in around about eighteen sixty two, I think it was. Um, so it was all being built up at that time. I think the design of it is just not appropriate for the, for what's alongside it, uh, on either side, to be honest with you. In terms of parking, that's already been said, but, um, you've got to remember, as has been mentioned, I think by councillor Smith, the, uh, the, um, yard that's behind, um, is not allowed to be used by that building. It was part of the agreement, the S one O six agreement for Tesco's when it was built. That it provided, um, parking for the title. And also the title and Station Road et cetera, et cetera, has actually got a traffic order on it banning parking. Um, I, less said about enforcement, that's another matter. Um, uh, so you can't use that as parking either. Uh, so you get back to basically there is no parking now. Highways will probably come back and argue that it's in a town centre location. But we all know what happens there when, uh, when that happens. And also finally, I think someone mentioned about no, no, uh, dimensions. I have to say this particular architect never puts dimensions on any of his drawings. I've seen it many, many times before. And, and it's a crying shame because public health and housing, I think have sort of picked up on the fact that they're not overly big. Uh, but they haven't been willing to put their head above the parapet and say it is far too small, which is a shame. Thank you.
Uh, Google did go up, um, states. Oh, you got it. Yeah, yeah, Colin. Google car did go up Station Road, just the other side of the wall. Yeah.
Yeah, we can see it there. It's quite plain. Yeah, thank you, Colin. Um, councillor Stitchcombe?
Uh, yes, I was just going to draw, um, members' attention to the comments by public health and housing, but councillor Burns has just covered that. I mean, they, they, they must have taken some dimensions off the scale, I think, even though there are none, uh, figured on the, on the drawings. Um, I'm sort of tempted to propose neutral, but the, saying that we support the comments made by public health and housing. Thank you.
Yeah, public health and housing are a bit concerned as well about the fire escape. Um, you have to regress through the kitchen for a few of the, um, properties as well. I think that we, we should highlight that. Um, and they also recommend that the, um, first floor rear flat is, uh, single only, um, so, you know, just for single people. Um, so, um, and the ground floor and first floor flat should be couples only. So I think that should be added, um, into it because they are, because it seems like they are very small. So that's why she's saying that they should be, um, just specifically for them, them sort of people. Um, and the the second floor kitchen, flat kitchen, second floor flat, the kitchen's too small, apparently she's saying. It should be seven square metres where it's, uh, for four people. Because that, that's going to be used for four people and it should be seven square metres. So she's saying that that kitchen's too small as well. So it's, um, there's, there's quite a few that I think we should highlight what, um, public health and housing is saying. Um, anyway, I think councillor Skitchum has posed a neutral. Is that correct?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking actually possibly we should propose object. I mean, it's not a massively strong objection necessarily, but we do object to all sorts of things, don't we? And we can draw attention to all the things you just mentioned from, from public health and housing. So I'm changing that to object with, with those comments.
Okay. Okay, is there any more comments before I go to the vote? At all, councillor Crooks?
I, I'd like to second the proposal of objection, um, mostly on the grounds of overdevelopment, um, lack, lack, lack of parking. The loss of the historic, um, gateway by the Prince of Wales pub. And, um, I don't know if I could ask Aaron, I don't, I don't know if you have thought about calling it in, Aaron, just, just so we can get some extra scrutiny on it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay then, since there's no others, I'll go to the vote. Um.
Yeah, what were we actually voting on with, uh, objection with the comments that?
Yeah, we just stated, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I, I don't think anyone's sort of, um, objecting against any comments at all. I think we're all in favour of all the comments, aren't we? Yeah? Okay, right. So we propose objection to them and all, uh, to all the comments with all the comments included. Um, councillor Liz Smith, do you want to say something? No? Oh, right.
You're just supposed to go with the vote.
Oh, right. Okay. No, I'm just saying that we've got, I've got to say that who they are really. Um, that's, uh, posed by councillor Stitchcombe and seconded by councillor Crooks. All those in favour, please show. Okay, hold on because I've got to click over. Right, that's, okay, everyone, everyone for that one. Unanimous.
Yeah, because you've given the point about the time, it's getting a bit late there.
Yeah.
I'd say the same thing. If you want to suspend standing order three X to continue.
Yes, please.
Or otherwise, uh, you're to go into delegated authority anyway.
There is no standing orders. Colin, because it's a working party?
Um, well, that's true. Yes, you can just keep on going. Sorry, guys, you don't get to escape thanks to councillor Crook's correct observation.
Can I just say I've got to go though, I'm afraid, at this point?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Liz. Sorry about.
See you later.
Um, right, the next one is, uh, item nine, which is ten, uh, Ten Chapel Drive, DC twenty one zero eight five eight. Single story, front and rear extension. Um, any comments? So councillor Skitchum?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I was a bit worried that there wasn't really clearance for the car, but I took, took some measurements and tried to apply this. Uh, no, I didn't apply the scale, but I held my ruler up against the scale. I reckon there is just clearance for a car, uh, five point two metres from the footpath to the wall of the proposed, um, extension, front extension. So I think that is just, that, that will pass potentially. Um, so I, I, unless anyone's got anything else to say, I would propose neutral on that.
Well, the, I'm a bit concerned about the stacking of the two cars. One, and it goes, you know, it goes into a main road and that is quite, quite a busy main road. Um, really, I would propose that there'd be another drop curb so they wouldn't have to stack.
Well, you can't. That's the problem. Once you've got a drop curb, you can't widen it.
Oh, right.
That's what John was saying earlier. Once you've got your so many metres drop curb, you can't.
Yeah, but it's only, that was only a single one. I thought he was talking about a double one.
Yeah, but you can't have a double one. It doesn't exist, Pat. You, you, once you, you're. Yep, but you can't have a double one, it doesn't exist, Pat, you, you, once you've, you're either a shared access with a neighbour or you're a single access. And once you've got the, the number of curb stones removed and dropped, you cannot have any more according to the rules, so that's, that's just tough. If you want double the width of your driveway, you've got to work that out yourself, you can't just say, oh, I want a, a wider drop curb, they won't give it to you.
Right. That's, that's what I'm worried about, I'm worried about the stacking and um the busyness of the, of the road.
Well, I would certainly say we need to comment on that, that's a consideration, isn't it, that I, I don't know if I've got a really strong objection against it.
Right, okay, councillor Davidson?
You're muted, Pat, Bruce.
Sorry about that, um, that part of Chapel Drive, a lot of the cars actually do park on the grass verge. Um, which is obviously between the pavement and the drives. Um, if you look at it in the last couple of months, they're covered in mud because of that. Um, again, I looked at this this afternoon, it just about works, it's interesting to note that there's no other people have done a front extension on that part of Chapel Drive, further up they have, but then their houses are further back. So it's gonna stick out a little bit, it's, it's just not gonna look right, um, the, the front extension. But yes, if they're going to put the cars in, taking out the garden, it does, it does work, Alan, um, but it's very, very tight. It doesn't look right though, I don't think. But it's, I'm not sure it's an objection. It, it's, you've got to look at the place really, and as I say, further up Chapel Drive, because the houses are further back, there's a lot of front extensions. And they, they seem to be okay. Thank you.
Councillor Burns?
I think, I think the wording is, is, it's um upsetting the street scene. If that's what you want to use at that end, that's why, you know, I drove up there the other day and I must admit, I thought, wow, that's gonna stick out a bit.
Okay. Right, so where do we go from here? We, we go for, because we posed for neutral by councillor Stitchcombe with comments. Councillor Crooks?
How far is the front extension sticking now? Do we, do we have a figure? How far?
It's, it's quite a bit, because there's, there's already an intermodal garage that sticks out a little bit. Um, but yeah, I, I looked at it, the parking is there, you've still got enough parking just for one car before it hits the pavement.
Yeah, but this is a three bedroom, it should be two or more, two and a half.
Well, it's only gonna be two.
But on the plans, they're showing two.
Yeah, 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 he meant there's room for one car length, Pat, yeah, you know, not like one and a half cars length, I think, is that what you meant, Bruce?
Yeah.
Right.
So you, you can't, you know, you're quite right, Pat, you can't get the second car in without crunching the curb, you know, um, unless the first one moves out of the way and then comes back in again, so that's, that is a consideration. I just think we've got to be thinking about how are people gonna charge their electric vehicles as well? You know, so that, that's a consideration, isn't it? I'd, I'd like to get people parking on their own properties as far as possible.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good point. Councillor Brown?
Street view if you want it, Chair.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say the uh garage is being extended, if you like, that's right, the right word to use, one point three metres. And the right hand side of the um uh building, if, if Colin wanted to put a street view up, uh, which I have got as well, um, is some two point four metres extra in the front. What's that, two, four, five, about five foot is that, something like that, in, in old money?
So you can actually see next door neighbours, um, on, certainly on the right hand side, there's only space for one car as it stands currently. You can put two cars onto that drive because you'd be, you'd be on the pavement. On the left hand side, you could get two cars because obviously they don't have an intermodal garage.
Right, okay, is there, so any comments on that at all? Any more comments? We've got a proposer for neutral with, with comments added to it. Uh, can I have a second for that please? Uh councillor Greenie, second it? Right, all those in favour of neutral with them comments, please show? You have to hold on a sec. Right, that's it, it's carried. Okay, next one. Is item ten, which is DC twenty one zero nine zero nine HH, twenty nine Downs Crescent, first floor rear extension. I notice they're extending the bedroom on this one. Is there any comments on this? Councillor Dave Smith? Oh, I was gonna say councillor Smith now, can't I?
Propose neutral.
Right, okay, proposing neutral, seconded by councillor Stitchcombe, yeah? All those in favour of neutral, please show? Yeah, okay, so everyone, thank you. Um. Item eleven, which is DC twenty one zero seven four six HH, fourteen Old Rope Walk. This is a single story rear extension following demolition of existing conservatory. Is there any comments on this one? No? Can I have a proposer then please? Uh councillor Davidson?
Neutral, please.
Thank you. I have a second for neutral. Councillor Dave Smith?
Yeah.
All those in favour, please show? Yeah, so everyone, okay. Um, the next one is did I do Downs Crescent?
Yeah.
Okay, right, I'm getting so mixed up now, my eyes are going all funny. Right, item twelve, DC twenty one zero nine two three HH. This is Clarendon, Rattin Road, small A, first floor extension, small B, single story rear extension. And I've noticed they're converting it to a four bedroom, not a three bedroom. Right. Any comments? No? No? Right, can I have a proposer please? Councillor Stitchcombe? Sorry councillor Davidson, I'll see your hand up now, it's, you're a bit dark, so I'm having trouble. Right, your proposer for councillor Stitchcombe, what, what was your proposal?
Uh, it's neutral, please.
Good. Councillor Davidson, seconded?
Neutral.
Yeah.
Good. All those in favour, please show? Thank you, overwhelming. Next one is last but not least, number thirteen. Which is DC twenty one zero nine six nine HH, nineteen Alderson Close, single story side extension following demolition of existing porch. Any comments on this one? No? Go, go, councillor Sixham?
I'll propose neutral on this.
Neutral, right, okay. Can I have a second for this one, for neutral? Councillor Davidson, all those in favour of neutral, please show? Yep, everyone, right, thank you very much. Back to the planning now. Which is item
Ten.
Item ten, which is matters of to report. Is there any matters to report? Councillor Burns?
Yeah, I'll make it quick. Um, obviously I emailed everyone about the research park decision by West Suffolk. Uh, personally, I'm not very happy about it, I think they ought to have um done something a bit more proactive because it's not the first time um this has happened, um, where uh potential land, development land has been calculated. And certainly back in two thousand and fourteen, I shot it to pieces in the inspector's review for Vision twenty thirty one. But this time they've been allowed to get away with it and the current inspector, I think, uh, has done a poor job personally, uh, if I'm allowed to criticise a planning inspector. Um, so that's that. Um, I don't know whether anyone wants to um raise it up with West Suffolk at all, that's up to them. Um, in terms of um the longstanding thing about Lidl, um, and their footpath particularly. Um, we've received an email, councillor Lucrene and myself received an email uh today about it, popped up there. Um, there is a recommendation from the officer and I've taken some photographs, which I'm probably gonna write off to them tomorrow with my views and obviously councillor Lucrene would put up his views um about the location of the footpath um alongside the building and also planting and various other things, so just we have finally had an update, that's taken about sixteen months since the last update from West Suffolk. And two, over two years since I first reported it to enforcement. Thank you. Did you get that, Colin? So you're gonna have the recording anyway.
Thank, thank you for that. Right, thank you everyone, it's been a very long meeting, I, I do apologise for that. Um, it, the circumstances, I think because of, it's been so long since the last one. And also we had um Redroad, I think we've already put them off twice. Um, and then because of planning um coming through from Symon. Um. We've asked for an extension for that because they wanted that tonight as well. Um, so we've asked for an extension, which we don't know if we got it.
Chair, I say councillor Crook, councillor Crooks has his hand up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll get to him, I'm just, just gonna thank, sack my piece, sorry. Um, as I'm trying to explain why, why this has gone on and why we had so many. Um, as I say, because of, because the, the planning application came through. Um, Stuart from Symon wanted to sort of speak about it before it came through, so that's why we had two, two people um doing presentations, which we wouldn't have had really. Right, okay, councillor Crooks?
Okay, that, um, you let the public have a good say tonight and so that, that, that was fair enough, that was a good job, well done. Um, are, are you gonna, are you gonna delegate all these, what we've done tonight because of um expiry dates on planning applications? Are you just gonna blanket delegate them all and send them off? Is that, is that how it's gonna work?
Yeah, I think so. Colin, can you come in on that?
Um, yeah, it'll be a, a quick discussion between Vicky, who's able to watch the recording, and uh, uh, the Chair. And then, yes, we're anticipating that they'll take delegated decision on all of those things in accordance with what's been said tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you everyone, um, and uh hopefully we won't get this anymore like this. Um, as I say, it's, it's, it's been too long really. Right, thank you very much and uh I wish you a good, good evening.